I saw that.
Okay, sorry. Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, the thirteenth day of December. The time is nine o'clock. This is going to be a little bit of an unusual meeting this morning because the boards of Ada County Commissioners and the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District are meeting together this morning to jointly conduct their weekly open business meeting. The purpose of the joint meeting is to simultaneously address Agreement Number 15091 and Resolution Number 2826 between Ada County and the Ada County Medical Services District. Okay, Mr. Kenyon and I are present. If you could introduce yourself for the board starting over here.
We have Lexon Development Services.
Richard Beck Development Services.
I'm David.
Commissioner-elect.
Commissioner Mike Work Ada County Operations.
Josh Brown Ada County Operations.
Rob Brown Treasurer's Office.
Tim Colling Treasurer's Office.
Jennifer Molly Clerk's Office.
Sean Rain Paramedics.
Axuwa Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan Communication.
IT guy.
Trip Triple Clerk's Office.
Attorney Assistant.
Bob Perkins Ada County Procurement.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Whether or not.
Okay, we have some unfinished business to take care of. I'll accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bob, it's all yours. All right, we're going to look at RFQ 23014.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kenyon. The evaluation team for RFQ 23014, the Design Services for Ada County Landfill Education and Outreach Center has completed the initial evaluations of the proposals, but would like to interview the top two candidates. And therefore, we'd like to request to retable the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations to the December 27, 2022 Open Business Meeting.
Two good ones, it sounds like.
We do.
Excellent. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll move to table RFQ 23014, Design Services for Ada County Landfill Education Outreach Center to December 27, 2022, so our staff can interview the final two candidates.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now we're going to take up Agreement Number 15091. Before we do a resolution, are there any discussions on the agreement?
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to make a comment for the record. This is one of those joint agreements where we're wearing two hats. One is the Board of Commissioners and one is the Board for the County Medical Services District.
That's right, we are.
It's a little confusing.
It is confusing. Our lawyers told us that's what we needed to do, so we're doing it. Okay, go ahead. Is there any further discussion?
Do you want to say anything?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, you know, I would certainly like to thank the board for the consideration for the impact fees. I'd like to thank Leon and his team for all the work they've done. Also, Dan Westcott for helping us put everything together, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve Agreement Number 15091 as listed on the agenda between Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District.
I will second the motion. Unless there's further discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now I will open the public hearing on resolution, on this resolution. What number is it? Resolution?
2826.
Yeah, 2826 of the Board of Ada County Commissioners and the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District adopting the Ada County Paramedics Impact Fee and Capital Improvement Plan. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
No, Mr. Chairman, this follows the above agreement that we just approved. So go ahead when you're ready to close the public hearing and make a motion.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2826.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve Resolution 2826 as listed on the agenda between Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Ax.
Thanks. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2823. ARPA Resolution Number 23, Resolution for Approval of allowable expenditure from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget for Park at Expo Idaho and Subgrant to Boise City. Is there further, any discussion on this resolution?
Jennifer, anything?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon.
Yes.
This is for the Design and Construction Management Services for Expo Park and then the subgrant to Boise City for the homelessness, the four months of homelessness, our homeless people in hotel rooms.
Okay.
And they're combined into one?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Combined in one resolution, yes, okay. Is there any other discussion? I'll accept the motion on resolution, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2823 and accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the resolution. 2823 is listed on the agenda.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2824, a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Emergency Medical Rental Assistance Appropriation Act II, ERA II budget. Is there a discussion on the public hearing?
Maybe just for the record, we could have Jennifer give us the amount to read into the record.
Yes, Jennifer.
Got to put you on the spot.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, this is just a reallocation of ERA II from the state pool and in the amount of $10 million.
Significant.
Significant.
Yes.
And that's a reallocation.
It's a reallocation for, yeah, it's a reallocation from the whole state pool that was not used by another agency.
We're doing such a good job here.
Yes, they are. Okay, I'll close a public hearing on Resolution Number 2824 and accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve Resolution 2824 as listed on the agenda.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2825, a resolution for procurement of ballot printing services on the open market for the Ada County Clerk's Office. Is there a discussion on that? Would you like to tell us a little bit about it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the result of our bid opening. We received one bid that we found correct term response. Yes, so, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And Trent, so as you recall, we went out to bid for bid 23012. We only received one bid for this project.
From New York City.
From New York City. So as you recall, the Idaho statute doesn't allow for printing outside the state of Idaho, and so we recommended that you reject that bid and go out on the open market and allow Trent to go out on the open market to see if they can procure those services. So that's what this resolution is memorializing, is that open market.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll accept the motion on the resolution. Oh, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2825 and accept a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2825 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
You lead it, right? Yeah.
All right, we'll now take up catering permits, licenses, catering permits. Is there any discussion? I'll accept a motion on the catering permits and the new license, new licenses and license transfer.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and ratify the catering permit previously signed by Commissioner Beck as identified on the agenda. Approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, three new licenses and two license transfers, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Clerk's Office.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you've hopefully seen, I think you've reviewed the request to retain the fund balance for the vessel fund. Something we do every year. The revenues were more than, what we have more in the account than the revenues were brought in this year, and we just had to formulate a request from the state that we retain those funds. It's in the amount of $184,893.54. So appreciate the board's consideration on that. Other than that, we have a daily audit still going on for our year end. It's been a rough year end with all of the extra work that we've had with our ERP contracts, but I think we're going to get there.
Look good.
Some additional requirements have been placed on us too with the audits, with some leases and some other different accounting functions that they've placed on us. So we're working through it, but.
We're not be wrapped up.
They hopefully will finish by the end of this week and then have some report hopefully by the end of the year to be able to present to the board.
Okay, any questions?
Just tell Kathleen and Tim, thank you. That's a lot of work for them.
It's a lot of work.
They've burned the Mid-Idaho oil.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Trent, are the vessel funds, do they stay in the general fund or they?
They will remain in the fund balance.
In the fund balance.
For waterways.
Okay, okay. Go ahead and make the motion if you're ready then.
Ah, we're ready, I'll accept the motion.
Yeah, I move to approve the request for retention of surplus money in the county vessel fund from fiscal year 2022 and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, we now have the Claims Journal for December 9th. Is there any questions or discussions on the Claims Journal?
Not just, they were sitting on us both again. This is a joint.
Yes, this is a Claims Journal for AMS and for the Ada County, of course.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated December 9th, 2022 for Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District.
I second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have with us our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob Quaid.
Yeah, personnel actions first though.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, we have personnel actions. Yeah, I'll accept the motion on the personnel actions.
Again, we're sitting as a joint board on this one as well. So I'll move as a joint board to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda for Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District in December sheet you may not file in Commissioner's office.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We still have our distinguished assessor with us.
Soon be judge.
For the next couple of days. Soon be, you can be a judge, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll tell you, that sounded really good.
Yeah.
Just a few things that are going on. We are just wrapping up the reappraisal, the physical inspection for the 2023 assessment year. There are three minute wait times out in motor vehicles, so things are really under control there. We're just trying to decide how we're going to be, adjustments will need to be made in staffing as this state takes on more and more of the responsibilities. But they're keeping on that, we're keeping on that. One of our employees is out with COVID, Brad, my chief deputy. Just tested positive yesterday, so what a surprise. And then just lastly, we're getting ready for the new assessor to take over. The one man who's working with her to make the transition as seamless as possible. I think it's going to work out very well. Lastly, and I don't want to talk about this, but I must, next we have tax cancellations. We do have a large one in there. It's about $5 million tax cancellation. We have just about a million dollars left. Just what it was, was one of our appraisers was out in the field. There was a large, it had formerly been an ag parcel. She saw all these pipes sticking out of the ground, as you would see in land that's being prepared for development. Well, as it turned out, the owner of that property was installing an irrigation system. So it still qualifies for the ag exemption. So we took the ag exemption off when in fact we should not have. And so we reduced even the value by $5 million.
Significant, how large was the property?
$22,000 in taxes. With that, I'm going to go ahead and leave.
Yeah.
Well, at least we don't have to have the State Tax Commission come in and do our appraisals.
Oh, yes, indeed. Yeah, we've really tried to avoid that.
Oh, yeah.
As we looked last week, it's not a good thing to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that is, that is not. Are we going to have about 15% done on the reappraisals this year?
We do 25, the physical inspection.
Yeah.
We do 25, 20% a year.
100%, okay.
Yes, so we have, in five years, we have 100%.
Yeah, all right. Okay, anything else for us?
That's everything.
Okay, thank you. I will accept a motion on these tax cancellations, which are not cancellations at all, but merely adjustments, but the code calls and tax cancellations.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes three tax cancellations for 2020, four tax cancellations for 2021, 58 tax cancellations for 2022, and one casualty loss, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second that.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Okay, do we, our distinguished treasurer's representative is here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll give you an update for Treasurer Mon since she's not available. We're, as you know, right in the midst of our tax collection period. We kind of officially unofficially start that in our office after the bills go out.
Right.
Because at that point, we start getting payments come in. So prior to our meeting, I just did a quick calculation to see how it's gone. Roughly these past three weeks, we've collected about 140 million in the last three weeks. In the last week, since just last Tuesday, we collected just under 50 million. And as we get closer to the due date of the 20th, that's when we see the big payments that come in from mortgage companies and we can see.
And they're all just wire transfers.
What?
Usually.
Yeah, and we'll see 60 to.
Go through and reconcile them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing down there every day. I think Monday, Mondays are busy for mail. Obviously, people writing those checks over the weekend and getting them in the mail maybe Saturday. So we'll have four or 5,000 pieces of mail on that one day alone.
You're going to have that jogger going hot and heavy, aren't you?
Yeah, we might have to put a new motor in the budget for next one. And so it's going very well. The big wire payments, they come in a few days prior to the due date typically, and that's where we'll see, you know, 60 to 80 million dollars in one wire. They'll pay 60,000 parcels, big numbers like that.
Tim, do you have an extra report?
I do. And so, yeah, that's going well. And now we'll get into the monthly investment report. There hasn't been a lot of changes. We're still seeing higher rates. The Fed's going to meet tomorrow. The Consumer Price Index came out this morning, a little less than they had anticipated. And so you saw a big pre-market boost, and I think that tapered off a little bit just prior to this meeting. Yields went down quite a bit on the bonds that we typically purchase. But I think the Fed, I mean, nobody knows, but my guess tomorrow, we'll probably see a 50 basis point increase, so that'll affect the market values of our investments. We are sort of taking advantage, a little bit of the higher rates in the lower duration opportunities. In fact, this month of November, we did make a purchase. We took $10 million out of L-Gip, which is currently yielding. It doesn't show that on here on the very top. If you look at the yield of maturity on the far right, that's 2.542. However, we don't report our monthly yield on the November until December because we don't get the statements until after this report is produced. So the actual yield on the L-Gip where we have bulk of our money is about 2.82. So you can see.
It's been a long time.
It's crazy.
Why did we take that 10 million? And where did we move it to?
We moved it into a money market account. And the reason for that is because on the yield curve, the short duration investments, that's why we have an inverted yield curve. The 10 million is sitting in a money market, very liquid, very safe, and it's earning 3.7%.
Okay.
So.
How long has it been an inverted curve?
I can't remember when it first inverted, it was in many months. And it's been pretty dramatic. One of the major components that economists look at and the market looks at is the twos, tens inversion, which is the two-year and the 10-year treasury. And I saw it over 80 basis points at one point. Today, it's about 77, I think. So it's pretty inverted, and that typically precedes a recession by about, on average, 18 months.
Right.
So we'll see what happens with that. But the money market, we put that money in on the 9th of November. So we had 22 days of it sitting in there, earning interest at 3.7%. And it was about 25,000.
Who's the custodian on that?
It's a US bank.
US bank.
Yeah. So you don't see that in here yet because on our trial balance toward the back, the treasurer's trial balance, you'll see 10 million in, and then the ending balance is 10 million because we get the interest in December, not in February. So there's a little bit of a lag there. Other than that, we haven't had any maturities. We did make a new purchase, but it's actually going to settle today. So that'll be on next month's report.
Are there any penalties when we withdraw from L-Gip?
No penalties.
Okay, and then on the money market, the other way around?
No penalties, yeah. Completely liquid, and we're monitoring it closely. We're talking with our advisor, RDK, and we may even move some more over there because under the current environment with the yields doing what they're doing and the Fed likely to maintain that for quite a while, it just makes sense for us to quickly move that over, let it sit there, earn more yield, and if they start to ease at some point, which they will at some point in the future, it's very simple to do a transaction of that back or put it in whatever makes sense at that time. So I don't know if we necessarily have to go through any of the main items or if you've had a chance to review it yourself. We earned just under 600,000 in interest this month. We have return of principal every month of approximately a million from our mortgage-backed securities. And so we're just kind of moving along with the. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to.
Any questions? From the board?
It's a lot better than it did.
Oh, yeah. There are some advantages to increasing interest rates.
Yeah.
To the government.
And to savers.
And to savers, people save, that's right.
We have, just as an example, a couple of years ago, we had 16 million sitting aside in a money market type of an investment, and it was consistently earning about 25,000 a month. Once the Fed started reducing the rates, that 16 million, we were seeing monthly interest payments of just over $200. That's how huge of an impact it can have. So it really penalizes savers and so people on fixed income retired and that's really get penalized when they lower those rates.
Did the Fed make any projections on, because they're doing this for inflationary purposes to hopefully put a dampener on inflation? Did they come up with any projections on when that might start occurring?
They.
And that affects us as well.
Yeah, they don't really say what they're thinking too far in advance.
Okay.
But the market participants and the bond market participants expect it to happen spring or maybe mid 2023, but it's just really hard to say.
Yeah, it's, yeah, no question about that. Okay, any other questions? Our Treasury? Hearing done, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks. Okay, we will now take up the approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, we passed Model M and P certificates to the state for use of purchase of fuel and control from Conrad and Bishop Co-Energy and United Oil. And we have a release of lien.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Two motions. I move to authorize the chair to sign the certificates of state use for purchase of fuel from Conrad and Bishop, Co-Energy and United Oil for weed and pest.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a release of lien, Park Center Lots LLC.
I move to approve one notice of lien for weed and pest as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have some Expo Idaho interim agreements. Is there any discussion? I've looked them over. I have no objection. Is there any discussion?
Bet you're excited to go to the snake and reptile show.
Well, it's going to be next October. If you're here, we can probably get you a ticket.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the nine interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Parks and Waterways, we have two interim, two agreements on the event center. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the two Barbara Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have 14 agreements. I've reviewed all the agreements. Is there a motion to approve the agreements?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 14 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the weekly indigent items. Is there any discussion? No discussion, or I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated December 13, 2022, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
There being no further business, we will be in recess as the boards of Ada County Commissioners and the Ada County Emergency Medical Services